Call the meeting into order. Those that care to, please stand for a pledge of allegiance and opening prayer. Mr. Franklin, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Let us pray. Lord, we give thanks and praise. We show our gratitude for yet another opportunity to shine, shining bright and true to your example. We are grateful for all that make our government possible, and we are grateful for the consent given by the citizens, the trust in our process, and the ability given to each and every one of us to do the right thing at the right time for the right reason. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry, I'm working on the technology up here. I have something added. Got it, alright. So, is everybody enjoying the heat? Somebody asked me, you know, what I thought of the weather, and I said every time I walk by a window, I get sunburnt, so I hope everybody else is faring better than I. I appreciate you being here tonight. We've got a heavy agenda, so we're gonna try to get through it in the best way possible. Appreciate you all being here, though. So, I'd like to start off with citizen participation. We're gonna open this up for citizen participation. Anyone wishing to speak to something that is not on the agenda tonight, you can approach the podium, and you'll be given three minutes to speak, and you can talk about anything that is not on the agenda tonight. Come on up, sir. State your name and your address. It's good to see you again.
Good to see you again, Mayor. My name is Richard Hobby. I live at 222 East Hadley Street. And as you may recall, I was here a few months ago to express my thoughts about density of housing. As you may recall, I believe that high-density housing is too dense. And I live in a medium-density area, and it's pretty good. But when I cross the street, it's high-density. And it's really just a little too jammed, and I don't think it's just my particular personal aesthetic and subjective feeling, although obviously that could be the case. I can't quite believe that I'm the only one in Republic who would like a little more room, a little more lawn, a little more space between my neighbors. So I thought I'd come back because I read a couple of weeks ago in the newspaper that the council, maybe even tonight, is reviewing a new proposal for a hundred-acre lot to be developed, and it said "high-density." So I thought, gee, I wonder why this push for high-density. I thought I'd come back. Now, I remember you told me that this is not a time for me to ask questions, so I will respect that. But I thought it would be good for me to maybe raise it again and encourage all of the members of the council to think about what kind of living space we want in Republic, short-term and long-term. And I would somehow like to find out what the philosophical, and perhaps financial, and emotional, and aesthetic reasoning behind this is. So I won't ask it as a question, but perhaps, I don't know if this is appropriate, Mayor, but if you'd be willing to meet with me for twenty minutes sometime, personally, I would be, like to hear your thoughts about this more in-depth.
You read my mind. So here's the situation. This is not a give-and-take. I can't answer every single question. I appreciate you following the rules and respecting that. But what I do offer absolutely anyone is to email me. My email is on the city webpage. You email me, you get a response almost immediately, because I'm a little obsessive about it. And I will schedule a time, but I'm probably gonna bring a sidekick with me to, to help out, because here's the thing. You say "high-density." You and I think of a certain thing, but the engineers and the planners come and kind of lay it out in more of a grid-like fashion. So I would welcome you or anyone to reach out to me via email, and I'd be glad to set up appointments and talk about these issues, and that's part of my job description.
Thank you very much. And let me just mention in that regard, I did meet with Andrew Nelson and his colleague Karen Haynes for about an hour a few weeks ago, and they were really helpful. It was primarily focused more on technical issues, which is important.
Right.
But I'm really, as I explained to them, I'm really more interested in the aesthetics of living space.
You, you mentioned my philosophy. I was a philosophy minor, so we'll talk for hours.
I look forward to it.
Very good, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it, Mr. Hobby. I believe we have someone else here for citizen participation. Is Mr. Glenn Ennis? I'm sorry, sir. You knew I was gonna get that wrong.
Yes.
Would you please state your name and your address, please?
Glenn Ennis, 356 North Tiara Drive in Sandstone.
Thank you, sir.
And can I ask a question? Something you said to him.
We don't do back-and-forth. Generally, this is your time to speak about what you need to. If you can ask a question, then I'll probably say we need to get with you afterwards to answer it.
My question is, what has transpired since the last meeting on the density of traffic at Main and 174 in relationship to when school starts, the morning and the evening traffic there? I'm wondering what the update is since the last meeting.
Thank you, sir. We'll, we'll get with you after the meeting to give you the update, unless you can answer in twenty seconds.
I can answer as part of the first agenda item.
We're gonna talk about it during the first agenda item, your, sir. Very good. I almost called you "your honor" because I've been in court all day, so I haven't switched jobs yet, so I apologize. Or I'm just gonna start calling you "your honor" from here on out. Is that okay? Moving on to any other people here wishing to speak about something not on the agenda. Alright, seeing none, I'm gonna close citizen participation. We will move on to the consent agenda. I would make sure everybody realizes we have four items on the consent agenda. I would entertain any questions or comments from council about items one through four. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the approval of consent agenda.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Moving on to boards, commissions, and committee schedules, please put this on your calendars. Next week, so we're not skipping a week. We're having another city council meeting next week, July 26th, same place, same time. We will have a board of adjustments meeting August 4th, 2022. The planning and zoning meeting on August 8th is canceled, and we will have another city council meeting on August 16th, 2022. Moving on to old business intangible items, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 22-39 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately 100.64 acres located between the 800 and 1500 blocks of West State Highway 174 from Sandstone West Plan Development District to Prairie Ridge Plan Development District PDD.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, last time we were here, I promised Andrew Nelson's entire work schedule to answer questions, and Andrew, could you bring us up to date on what's been done, what questions you've been fielding, and kind of a general overall view of the answers?
Sure, thank you. I did, I, I met with a few residents last week. A couple of just general questions over the phone, and then we had the letter submitted by Ms. Dorsey. So I'm gonna try to do my best to go through everything that I discussed with anybody, just so everybody hears it. But the first thing I wanna start off with, I, I realized in the questioning that we didn't do a great job of informing maybe council or the group that the Sandstone PDD exists today. So the Prairie Ridge PDD is really just a change to an existing PDD. So all of the, the lots, the multifamily units that we're talking about, those are existing in the Sandstone PDD. So, Chris, if you could go to the other... This is the Sandstone West PDD that was approved in 2006. It included about sixteen acres of commercial land and about fourteen acres of multifamily units. So when you go from this PDD to the one we're looking at, the unit's generally the same, give or take, depending on, on the engineering that they do, generally within the, the same few units. So the other thing I wanna point out about the old PDD is that the connections that were raised of concern, that being Bonita and Westwood, those are included in the old PDD as well. So, one thing I wanna clarify, if, if council so chooses to not approve the amendment to this PDD, to Prairie Ridge, there is an approved PDD that would take no further consideration if that developer was to submit engineering drawings. They would be permitted to build what you see in front of you there. So I wanted to clarify that. I don't think we did a great job of that at the last meeting, but I wanna put that out there.
Can I ask a question to make sure I understand?
Yep.
So if we don't approve the change tonight, that's certainly within the council's purview, but somebody could just go do that tomorrow without ever coming in and talking to us?
Correct. In 2006, when this PDD was approved, the, the PDD process did not have an expiration included with it. So in our new PDD process, now they have an eight-year period to make substantial progress on a PDD, or it expires. So in this case, I see that as a benefit. We're getting an expiration with the new PDD. We're also removing the commercial component in the, the proposed amendment. And in my opinion, the commercial use in the old PDD would amplify the concerns that I've heard. So comments regarding traffic, stormwater, just intensity of use would be amplified if that commercial was still there. So that's, that's, that's the first part of it. But generally, Chris, you can go, go to the other one. Most of the, the questions I had revolved around some of the things we had talked about already. Stormwater, it's our process to have a stormwater report with the development. We are, in the floodplain, we are governed by FEMA, so everything we do is governed by, by their doctrine on how to develop adjacent to a floodplain. So I wanted to clarify that. There was a question on whether we have those stormwater reports and if they can be seen. When a PDD amendment like this is proposed, the developer needs some assurance that if he goes through the expense of engineering and stormwater reporting and all of those things, that he can build what he's tasked his engineers with designing. So those things are done post-approval of the zoning. So there is an entire reporting process that goes on from here until actual permitting that the developer has to go through. So wanted to clarify that, too. There's, you're talking about water, sewer, street, all the infrastructure still has to be done and submitted and approved. So that's the next step in the process. Some of the other concerns, one regarding the lift station, whether there would be odors associated. We have about fourteen lift stations scattered throughout the city. We don't have any odor issues with those lift stations. They're self-contained. Sinkholes, a sinkhole report is required. There's no building in an identified sinkhole. There's a thirty-foot buffer around any identified sinkhole, and, and we require that report as part of the process. The majority of discussion revolved around the connections. And so our ordinances require connections to adjacent properties. We're dead-end streets. They're part of our major thoroughfare plan. It's required. That's why staff recommends it to the council. All of those connections by ordinance are required to be made. In general, I believe that cardinal direction connections are important, and at least one. In this case, we have two. There is the dead-end street of Westwood that has been the topic of discussion, whether or not it should be connected. It is required by our ordinance. It is required by Green County's ordinance as part of their traffic planning. So that's why the staff recommends that connection be made.
So by ordinance, you mean the law says we have to do it?
Correct.
Okay.
The traffic study doesn't show that that would change general flow of traffic on Westwood. It provides another avenue of flow for traffic, and generally, we like to disperse it as evenly as possible. So if for some reason that connection was not to be made, it would amplify the traffic that would go to Kansas potentially. It would increase the, I know one of the concerns was whether we would extend Kansas to the north on the property that's not included in this. It would make that probably more crucial to us in the future. One of the questions was, when will that become a priority? And I can't say that it would be a priority in the foreseeable future. That's generally rural residential in the county. I haven't seen any interest in development to the north, and I think that's really what would prioritize an extension of Kansas. So I think I, I think I covered it all. I think there may have been some questions about the quality or type of home that's being built. The city requires that whatever means of construction are done, that they meet the International Building Code. That's really our only governance of the type of home that's constructed, so.
Hearing all of that, council, do you have any questions that may have been developed over the last three weeks since... Has it been three weeks since last meeting? Has it been four weeks?
Three?
Three weeks? Or questions that have developed in your minds since hearing Mr. Nelson's recitation of what happened with the meetings and his answers to those?
I just wanted to speak, I don't know who's all here on, on behalf of that, but I had a chance to sit down with Karen and then Andrew. I always bug them a lot. But I think, I know it's, I can imagine it being frustrating, sitting there waiting for the council to give a vote and realizing that the future of, of this land is really kinda dependent on the vote that we place tonight. So I just wanted to honor you guys and let you know our, my heart and why I'm voting the way I'm voting. One thing I love about local government is that what we decide up here, it really affects us all because we're all local residents. So it just really holds us accountable. And then a lot of things we see, we have also gone through. So our, our land has gone through a similar situation, and I have learned to plant lots of trees. They are not thriving very well in this heat, but we will keep replanting trees. So all that to say is, we get it. I get it, and I really do empathize greatly. If I had my way, Matt, Mr. Mayor knows that I would keep everything farmland, 'cause I'm a farm girl.
She would.
I would. Yeah, we, we have debated on this. But the reason why I will have to vote in favor of the development is just because as I look at it, I've had to learn to separate the facts and the emotion of it all and understanding just, as we look at the land and the planning and zoning and, and how it has played out, it only makes sense and in good conscience, I couldn't vote against it just because of how, how the, how everything has played out and, and it all works together. But I just wanna let you know I empathize with you, and I just wanted to honor you in just sharing my heart and, and why that I would vote for the development, and so that's really all I wanted to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Very well said. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Andrew, you mentioned, so the previous PDD, the only major difference was the elimination of the commercial. I mean, any other, what was the other major, major changes, I guess? Yeah, substantially, it's, it's the commercial component. I believe the other PDD included duplex units, is that right? And this is just single-family and then a concentration of multifamily in the, in the center. And you, and this one would have a sunset or expiration on it? Yeah, it's eight years, yep. Thanks.
Mr. Franklin?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to add, too. I appreciate what you said, Jen. I appreciate this, the, all of the citizens that have spoke on this. It, it is a very difficult position, and, and when you look at the process, you look at the developers, private property, everyone followed all of the rules that are set before them. As far as I'm aware, the developer has done everything required of them, and so I'm, I'm in favor of this as well, but simply from the fact that everyone has followed every step of the process as we've led before us, so, thank you.
Any other statements or questions? Seeing none, I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 22-39.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll-call vote on our computers. Please click Refresh, cast your vote, and then hit Submit. Ordinance passes six to zero. Moving on to item number six on our agenda. And I know there are people here, if you would like to leave, you're more than welcome to. It doesn't hurt our feelings. Moving on to item number six on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 22-40 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council authorizing execution of an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for sidewalk improvements to ensure compliance with ADA standards under MoDOT Project Number J8S3200.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from the city?
No updates.
Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 22-40, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll-call vote on our computers. Please click Refresh. Cast your vote. Cast your vote and then hit Submit. Motion carries six to zero. Moving on to item number seven on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 22-41 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving a special-use permit for KO Storage of Ozark's LLC to operate a boat, vehicle, and self-storage facility at 909 North College Avenue.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from the city?
No updates.
Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 22-41, please.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll-call vote on our computers. Please click Refresh. Cast your vote. And then hit Submit. Clint, it's next. Motion carries six to zero. I'm gonna get on to the mayor's announcements. I'm gonna skip to the second one, and that is appointment of Ward Four council member. I tried. Alright, I'm sorry, man. Alright, so to update the council and update the audience, we conducted interviews, myself, Jared, Andrew, conducted interviews last week of the six applicants for the two spots, three in Ward Three, three in Ward Four. We interviewed everybody, and frankly, we had a great time doing it. I mean, there, there was not a bad applicant in the bunch. A lot of really interested Republic citizens. We had people that were old-school Republic. We had people that were so new, they didn't even qualify to actually be appointed. And the thing is, we really enjoyed it, but I have to come up with two people to nominate for these positions and to appoint. However, according to the city charter, I do need your consent and advice. For Ward Three, sorry, your kids aren't here, so you wait. For Ward Three, I have selected Brandon Self. I think that Brandon is a no-brainer in this situation, in the sense that he has served ably in the past. He has run for election in the past. He's been elected in the past. He is a known commodity and a fine choice to represent our citizens. He's Republic through and through. Just drive through town, you'll see his face on billboards, so. It's somebody I feel very comfortable requesting your advice and consent on. So with that, are, are there any people that would like to give me advice?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I, I do. And, and I agree with you wholeheartedly. Mr. Self was an excellent council member. I've really learned a lot from him. Appreciate having him up here. My issue that I'm having with, with that selection that I think of is the fact that Mr. Self ran for election, he resigned, we had to fill the seat, and that seat is still currently being filled by the appointee. And so when I'm looking at it from a fair and equal balance to all of the citizens of Republic, I see a little bit of a conflict of interest when we have one individual that holds two different roles on the same term as council.
I understand your position. I, I think the fact that Mr. Self moved into a new zone, new ward, I think that he no longer is eligible for his former seat, and thus, even though he was elected, he's no longer eligible for it. So I, I hear what you're saying.
And, and, and I, I agree with, you know, Mr. Self's character, but the other issue with that that I have is that there were two other willing citizens that have probably lived in that ward longer than Mr. Self. And so then again, looking at it from a fair and transparent process is my issue with.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate your thoughts. Any other thoughts? Yes, sir.
I've served with him for several years, and you can't fault him. He's good to the fault.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. So with that, I do need consent to make this appointment, according to our charter. So I will go down the line, starting with my left, moving down. Yea or nay?
Uh, yea.
Yea.
Yea?
Nay.
Yea.
Yea.
Mr. Self, come on up. Do we sign something? Does he take pictures?
Do you want to do both at the same time?
No. I mean, I'll do them both. So do we get the gifts back we gave him?
Mr. Mayor, please make sure you speak into my microphone.
He doesn't.
He's got it from there.
Oh, no.
There's a mic at the podium.
Alright, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Brandon Self.
I, Brandon Self.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications.
That I possess all the qualifications.
Prescribed for my office by law.
Prescribed for my office by law.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Missouri.
And of the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws.
Provisions of all laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
Affecting cities of this class.
Affecting cities of this class.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Republic.
Of the city of Republic.
And that I will faithfully demean myself in office.
And I will faithfully demean myself in office.
So help me God.
Thank you. Mr. Self, I do need a signature and your presence. Thanks, sir. Appreciate your willingness to serve. You can take your seat. You guys can tell we don't do this a lot. Alright. Second. You know, Ward Four was hard. And it was really, really hard because of the passing of Mr. Dykman. He was a loved individual and, and has very large shoes left behind to fill. And we met with a lot of people during this process. The decision to go with Clint was based on the fact that he has served in the past. He, when asked to help the city, he stepped up, and he has served on boards in the past. He has given his, his voice in the past, and he, he's a larger-than-life individual, and we know he will continue to be so. But in my determination, he also ran for election. Now, Mr. Dykman won, but the fact that he ran for election, he put his name on the ballot, and he put himself out there, I think carries weight, and ultimately, that's why we went with this particular choice, and I do open it up for advice from council.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Franklin?
I would just like to add on to that, that that had to, this had to be a very difficult decision. You had three great candidates in this ward, and, and that's outstanding. So I appreciate everyone that took their name on the ballot, and I appreciate your recommendation. I appreciate Clint in his last election cycle.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alright, as this is, I'm gonna start to the right. Yea or nay?
Yea.
Yeah, no vote yet.
So he's an officer like Gurkey?
Yea.
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Clint, if you would approach the podium.
Laura's going to swear you in and I will have you sign the other ball.
Alright, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Clint Gerlick.
I, Clint Gerlick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications.
That I possess all the qualifications.
Prescribed for my office by law.
Prescribed for my office by law.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Missouri.
And of the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws.
The provisions of all laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
Affecting cities of this class.
Affecting cities of this class.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Republic.
Of the city of Republic.
And that I will faithfully demean myself in office.
And I will faithfully demean myself in office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You got it all right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You did a good job.
Well done.
Congratulations.
Alright. And, third, but certainly not least, this is the reappointment of Randall Tindall to the Board of Adjustment for a five-year term ending July eighteenth, 2027. We appreciate Randall's participation in the past and we look forward to an additional five years. So without any strenuous objection, I will reappoint him. I don't need consent, I just appointment. So we are appointed. So, thank you Randall, I appreciate your service. Moving on to new business, specifically number eight on the agenda. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill twenty-two dash forty-two by title only, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, eight to zero, folks. Glad to be back at full strength. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council authorizing execution of a second supplemental STP Urban Program Agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the design and right-of-way acquisition on extending the Shuler Creek Trail.
Thank you ma'am. Mr. Brickner?
Good evening. Garrett Brickner, Engineering Manager for the city. This is a very minor change to the contract that has already been executed by the council and MoDOT. The only thing that's really changing is where exactly the funds are coming from. The Ozarks Transportation Organization reached out to us, asking us to change the funds from STP Urban to TAP funding, because TAP funding is more specific to trails and sidewalks. So it really frees up what they can do with their STB funds. And then the other adjustment is, in the original agreement, back in 2019 or 2020 when we signed it, it was just for design and right-of-way acquisition. Since then, we've added construction to that, so we needed to update the construction schedule. So that's really the only changes that are happening. There's no changes to the amount of funding or anything substantial with the project.
Thanks, sir. Questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Just for our audience that may be wondering if this is an update to the Shuler Creek Trail or if there's any substantial change, it's not, or if there's even an update that we would feel be warranted out to those citizens that are concerned. This is merely just an adjustment, just for the council's awareness. We're still waiting on approval for the trail design and the right-of-way from MoDOT. So until we get that, we really can't even say definitively, this is the trail.
So the only thing this changes is how we're paying for it?
Correct.
Or how they're paying for it?
Correct, yes.
Alright, sorry, not we, they?
Yep.
Alright. Questions from council? Seeing none, any citizens here wishing to speak on this issue?
Sure. So federal transportation dollars are classified in a lot of different ways. STBG funds or STP funds are for broad transportation. So they can be used for streets, trails, pedestrian facilities. I mean, anything you can think of that's related to transportation. And it's passed down from the federal government to cities, to regional transportation organizations, even to MoDOT. The TAP funds are coming from the same place, but they are specifically limited to trails and pedestrian facilities. I think that's what TAP stands for. So instead of giving us a hundred dollars out of this pot, they've changed it to the other pot of money that they have at the federal level. Just so they can use the other money for, like, street projects. They can only use the TAP funds for this type of project. If we keep the STBG or STP funds, we're taking from street project funds.
Alright, please remember this is a first read. So if you have any questions, please get with staff before the next meeting. Item number nine on our agenda, this is twenty-two dash forty-three. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill twenty-two dash forty-three by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 1.38 acres located at the 3400 block of East US Highway sixty from agricultural HE to general commercial C two.
Thank you ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Karen, I'm very well, thank you.
Sorry, I got in your way.
Karen Haynes, Assistant Building Administrator. Timberline Land Company LLC has applied for the zoning classification change, again of the 1.38 acres. This is located at the 3400 block of East US Highway sixty. This is basically right north of the existing sixty west apartment complex. This is a change from general commercial zoning or allowing for a general commercial zoning designation from agricultural. The applicant has expressed their interest in developing a self-storage facility if approved for a rezoning application that will involve a secondary step that goes before the Planning and Zoning Commission and, once again, City Council for approval of a special use. The rezon request is consistent with the adopted plans and ordinances of the city. The change in zoning would be compatible with the surrounding land uses along US Highway sixty. The water and sewer systems do have capacity to serve the intended use. Access to this particular site will remain only off of South Farm Road one oh one. It will have no access to US Highway sixty. A traffic impact study was not required due to the low intensity of the intended use, again, which is a self-storage facility. The city may require a TIS should that intended use change at some point in the future.
A TIS?
A traffic impact study.
Sorry.
The Planning and Zoning Commission did not hear any opposition to this during the public hearing and staff is recommending approval.
For the record, these two are laughing at me for asking that question. Sorry, it didn't sink in immediately. Questions from council?
Karen, just out of curiosity, what is there right now? Like, I should know. The parcel that we're speaking of is the green triangle and there is nothing there currently. So they are moving some soil, which they had a grading permit while they were in Green County before it was annexed. So that's the only thing that you'll see occurring on that site until we get to the point of, if it gets approved. Yes, I see that, thank you.
Other questions? Alright, seeing none, please remember this is a first read and get with staff before the next meeting so they can laugh at you too. Item number ten on the, they won't laugh at you, they only laugh at me. I'm sorry, that's not funny. I apologize, that was unprofessional. Moving on to item number ten on the agenda. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill twenty-two dash forty-four by title only, please. I said please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council authorizing execution of an engineering services agreement with Olson Incorporated for the planning, design, and construction inspection of the Highway MM expansion.
Thank you ma'am. Mr. Brickner?
Garrett Brickner, Engineering Manager for the city. So the city of Republic applied for a cost share with MoDOT and Green County as a partner to expand MM Highway to five lanes from I forty-four to James River Freeway. So as part of that, we had to go out to an RFQ to get an engineer secured. That engineer is Olson through the RFQ process. We scored the submittals that we got and chose them as the winner. So the estimated price tag on this is nine hundred and thirty-three thousand for, approximately, for the engineering work. We're asking for a maximum not to exceed of nine hundred and fifty thousand, so that if there's any incidental change orders that need to take place, we can handle those administratively. But if it is over the nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we'll bring that back to council for your approval before moving forward. So we have already received six hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars from the commission for the preliminary engineering of this project and we will receive another four hundred and fifty-seven thousand as we move into construction engineering for this project. So, and if you guys have any questions, happy to answer.
Do we have a timeline when this is going to begin or the expansion?
We'll start engineering as soon as it's approved through council. We'll get the contract signed by all parties and move forward from there. There are timelines associated with the actual cost share project. I believe we're looking at this one being done in twenty-four-ish.
Yeah. That's a great question. So time on any cost share project or any multi-participant funded project is exaggerated to what we're used to as a council. So if this was just a city of Republic project, it's a lot faster in this case. So even when we select this consultant, it has to go to MoDOT before it comes to you. So they also give general consent that we've selected Olson. They give general consent that the costs are appropriate. So it takes a little bit longer, but 2024, finished construction.
Out of curiosity, are the homes on there, are they aware of what's happening or?
Some of the homeowners were there. We did a public meeting for a grant that also had this as part of it and some of those homeowners did show up to that and we talked to them. So I think they're kind of aware. There are other options that we can pursue if they don't necessarily want to be kicked out of their, they wouldn't be kicked out, but if they don't want to move or something like that, so.
Okay. Will we see that at council?
Yeah, there'll be a series of public meetings that we'll go through. So just like, just like the trail, just like any other project where we're acquiring right-of-way, there'll be a series of public meetings where we'll hear from the residents. Generally, I would tell you that when we did the public meeting for all of MM, so expanded all the way down to ZZ, most of those homeowners were there and I would say that most of them are aware and more understanding in this instance than we see in other places in the city where it's a little bit more rural. So they know what kind of highway they live next to, that would be my general.
Yeah.
And they understand that it's going to be expanded.
Alright, thank you.
Other questions? Yes, sir.
The excess amount from the commission, I'm just kind of curious what happens with that. It looks like there's about $200,000 difference between what we're budgeting, I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, any excess that would come from the commission would go back into the cost share program. Generally, it's used up by the time we get to construction or right-of-way acquisition. I'm rarely seeing the surplus, it's usually the other way around, yep.
Thanks.
Mr. Franklin?
Mr. Nelson, is this the final piece of the puzzle that we were waiting on for the entire M corridor or is there still another section that we're?
There, well, I think technically, MoDOT has a second project that they're doing from Amazon Farm Road one sixty south entrance to Highway sixty. That's funded and they're currently working on preliminary engineering, 2025 construction. The portion from sixty to ZZ is the one that's still questioned on when it would be funded. Now, they've started preliminary studies and alignment for it, but it's still, it's not funded in a certain year yet.
The southern portion of Highway sixty?
Yeah, from sixty to ZZ.
Thank you.
Alright, seeing no other hands, if there's anybody else or any other questions you have for the staff, please get with them before the next read. Moving on to item number eleven on to our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill twenty-two dash forty-five by title only, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council approving a special use permit for Jocelyn Properties Arkansas LLC to operate a boat, vehicle, and self-storage facility on real property located at thirty twenty US Highway sixty.
Thank you ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. The applicant again has requested a special use permit, which is required for self-storage facilities by ordinance. The property is 5.7 acres and currently has three existing structures. None of the existing buildings are within the bounds of the actual development plan and will be affected by these improvements. Approval of the application would allow for the construction of approximately 54,000 square feet of storage units on the particular property. Both wastewater and water systems do have the capacity to address the needs of the applicant. A traffic impact study or TIS was required for this project. Improvement of the site in the manner described within this application will necessitate meeting the following recommendations made by the TIS. The easternmost entrance onto US Highway sixty will be eliminated. That entrance right now exits into the right-hand turn lane for Republic Road, so that one will go away with this particular development. And it will also be only a right-in, right-out situation from the property. So there is no opportunity to make a left-hand turn onto westernbound East US Highway sixty. Requirements of the fire service will require the applicant to place several hydrants on the property for that particular service to meet those distance requirements. If granted, the special use permit will allow the applicant to move forward with an application for a new commercial building permit or permits in this case, which would then go through the city's review process conformance with the city's adopted building codes. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the application. We did not have any being in opposition and staff is also recommending approval.
That was well done, thank you. Questions from council?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, on sixty, are you closing the crossover that goes into Come and Go?
At this time, no. There are some recommendations in the TIS to address an opportunity for anybody to make a left-hand turn using that crossover, getting into that westernbound traffic. So there will probably be some sort of delineators there to restrict that movement. That particular type of movement across traffic would be considered dangerous. So we will, again, look at the TIS once we get the actual improvement plans with the commercial building permit to make sure that it's safe. We will also address those in our review with MoDOT for this particular project.
If that crossing goes away, the only way in to Come and Go would be on M Highway, double M Highway.
Yes, it's unlikely that the entire crossing will go away. We'll probably still be able to make a left-hand turn into Come and Go. The movement restricted would just be a left-hand turn out of this particular property where you'd be kind of making an awkward left through that crossover traffic.
Mr. Wilson, did I answer all your questions? Yes, sir.
Do you think it's going to get rid of the right-hand turn lane completely going onto Republic Road there at that intersection?
It'll actually get rid of the right access point into this parcel. So it currently has two commercial access drives. The easternmost or the right-hand one actually exits directly into that right-hand turn lane, which is not a movement that we really want. And it was actually identified in the TIS. So that one will be removed and you'll have restricted movement into the property with only the one commercial access drive.
Alright, any other questions from council of Ms. Haynes? Seeing none, I understand that we have Chris Nguyen here wishing to speak on this? Good to see you again, Chris. Thanks for coming in.
Good to see you guys. Yeah, good evening. My name is Chris Nguyen, civil engineer with CJW located at 5051 South National Avenue, working with a developer on this property as his engineer. Karen really hit on all of the big topics, more or less here to answer your guys' questions. As far as traffic is concerned, we do have intentions to make that a right turn out of there only. What we'll do is we'll probably put in a splitter island in the middle of that, in that entrance that allows cars to make the right turn in and directs them to take a right turn out. You know, obviously not foolproof, I've seen people do some pretty wild things, but it would obviously encourage them to make the right turn out. As far as closing that center gap, I don't think Come and Go would ever.
center gap, I, I don't think Come and Go would ever, um, allow that, uh, in the near future. Um, regional detention basin located there in the center of the property. Um, you will notice that only the, uh, southern half, and this is kind of the western half in this, but north is not true up on this one. Um, the western or the southern half of the property is only what we're showing is developed. That's with the storage units. That's what we're asking for the special use permit for. There is, um, developable ground with highway frontage, um, that's not shown on here. The developer does intend to develop that within the existing C-two zoning. Um, it is zone C-two right now. Uh, he would look to put in some sort of retail. Um, at one point, he was looking at a coffee shop. We've had a special use permit on this property in the past and it expired. So he's, uh, he's moving forward. He's already starting to get bids and stuff, so he does plan to move forward with the, uh, the self-storage in the rear. Uh, climate-controlled building is the, uh, awkward, uh, Christmas-shaped one up there at the top. That one's, uh, indoor climate-controlled. Um, the rest of it's, uh, non-climate-controlled, uh, storage. So really, if you guys got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I think Karen covered most of it.
Any questions for Mr. Nguyen? Seeing none. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Please remember, this is a first read. Get with staff before the next meeting to answer any questions. Moving on to item number twelve on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill twenty-two dash forty-six by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately twenty-eight point eight-eight acres of property located at the seventy-two-hundred block of West Farm Road one seventy from agricultural AG and general commercial C-two to Kirkwood Estates Plan Development District, PDD.
Thank you, ma'am. Hi.
Hi, thank you. Uh, Kyle Kirk and Kirk Works LLC have applied for the zoning classification of four different properties along the seventy-two-hundred block of West Farm Road one seventy. Um, two of these properties do have, um, uh, frontage on east U.S. Highway sixteen. Uh, the development plan consists of three blocks containing the following elements. Um, block A is three point eight-four acres divided into three lots, uh, with compliance with the general commercial or C-two district regulations. Block B is six point five-two acres. It also consists of three lots with general conformance to the C-two, um, uh, district regulations. And finally, we have block C, which consists of eleven point eight-four acres divided into forty-nine residential lots, uh, with compliance with the medium-density single-family residential zoning district, which is the R-one-M. Uh, one parcel is currently, um, contains a structure that is the, um, body shop on the westernmost northern parcel. Uh, the remaining parcels are currently vacant. Uh, the development plan contains elements for new water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater systems to support the development. The property is surrounded by existing agricultural, commercial, and residential zone properties, including the following. Uh, we have east U.S. Highway sixty to the north, Green County Agricultural to the south, uh, medium-density single-family residential, which is the yellow, uh, to the east. And finally, we have, uh, some general commercial in Green County and local commercial and, um, general commercial in the City of Republic. The property can be served by municipal water and sanitary sewer systems. Um, it does not contain any floodplains or identified sinkholes. Uh, the development of the subdivision will include the construction of a new secondary arterial street identified as, uh, Bailey Avenue. Uh, Bailey Avenue extending from east U.S. Highway sixty all the way down to County Line Road is identified in the city's and the regional transportation plans. Um, the rezoning is in compliance with the city's adopted master plans, including that transportation plan. Uh, the applicant's representative spoke in favor of the application. No citizens spoke at the public hearing in opposition. Um, the planning and zoning commission did recommend, um, approval unanimously, and we are also recommending, uh, approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Karen, did I understand you right? It's, is it going to all be R-one-M, or is there a section where is high-density? Is that the yellow section?
There is no high-density. So if you look at block C, which is like the typical type subdivision, that's forty-nine, um, lots, and that is that medium-density single-family residential, which is kind of what we think of as like the typical. Um, it is the minimum of nine thousand square feet.
Okay. And that's all going to be residential, everything?
Correct. Everything in block C is residential. Block A and block B are both, um, general commercial type uses, which is retail and offices.
Okay, I was just going to ask you what they were thinking. Okay.
Other questions from couns, oh, sorry. Yeah, sunburn. Uh, other questions from council? Seeing none. I understand that we have Mr. Wilson here wishing to speak on this matter? Good evening, sir. Thank you for coming. Would you please state your name and your address?
Rick Wilson, Wilson surveying, eighteen thirty-five South Stewart, Springfield. We've come up with, uh, we've developed this, uh, presentation. She's covered all the points.
She does that a lot.
She does a good job.
Yeah.
We've tried to take the residential and match it to the residential that was adjoining it. We've had commercial on the west side. We've always, always had commercial on the north side of Farm Road one seventy. So we've tried to make it compatible with the neighborhood. And I realize that nobody wants to see the neighborhood grow, but, uh, this area is going to grow. This, uh, project will do a, about a two thousand square, uh, linear, two thousand linear foot extension to Bailey, which will be the major relief, uh, to the traffics as we, as it continues on to the south. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Wilson? No questions? Thank you very much for being here this evening. We appreciate you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Uh, I just wanted to take time to thank Kyle and Rick. Uh, they've been working on this for a while. Um, Kyle's been in business in Republic for a long time, probably worked on several of the people's cars in this room. So we thank him for his, uh, continued investment in the community. He did, uh, do, uh, a lot of diligence with the adjoining neighborhood to try to model that after what's, what's already there. So we appreciate that, Kyle. Yeah, any questions?
Seeing no questions, please get with staff with any questions before the next meeting. Moving on to item number thirteen on the agenda. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill twenty-two dash forty-seven by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving execution of a developer agreement with Republic Sixty-three LLC for the continued development of the Hankins Farm Plan Development District.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, the bill's departments requesting approval authorizing the city administrator to enter into a developer's agreement with Republic, uh, Sixty-three LLC. This is for the construction of public infrastructure associated with the Hankins, um, Plan Development District. Uh, this development plan, uh, was recently approved by council and is at the northwest intersection of State Highway MM and East Sawyer Road. Um, the developer's agreement authorizes the city to partner with the developer to construct infrastructure improvements, including approximately four thousand, uh, linear feet of water and sewer mains. Uh, the developer will reimburse the city for the cost of materials, equipment, um, used during this construction period. Uh, the construction will coincide with the city's upgrade, um, of a relocated Brookline South lift station, um, locating on the western portion of the property. Uh, the developer's agreement does include a provision for additional work if both parties agree to that at some point in the future. Additional scope of construction will require an amendment to the developer's agreement. Um, we have several items coming back, um, next week for approval related to this particular development, and then, uh, we will have a actual schedule associated with the project at some point in the future. I do want to point out that council did approve, uh, a very similar developer's agreement, um, like last September. Um, that had an expiration date of a hundred and eighty days. The hundred and eighty days expired earlier this summer. Um, they've done some additional engineering, and, um, we have, uh, done some new calculations, so we're bringing a new developer's agreement, um, with those current, um, linear feet calculations to you for approval.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions from council? Seeing none. Please get with staff before the next read. Moving on to other business. We're to resolutions. All right, we're making progress. Uh, item number fourteen on our agenda. This is twenty-two dash R dash thirty-four. A resolution of the city council authorizing an agreement with Arvest Bank to provide depository and banking services. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-two dash R dash thirty-four, please.
Motion. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Kyle Sutton, uh, finance manager for the City of Republic. Um, I bring before you the recommendation to enter an agreement with Arvest Bank for the city's routine depository and banking services. Uh, we opened up a request for proposal process, uh, and we received eight bids, seven of those, uh, which were viable and in line with our requirements for the city's banking services. Uh, of those seven bids, they were all very competitive, and we formed a committee amongst city staff, uh, those that are most relevant positions, uh, with working, uh, working with the, uh, bank services. Uh, out of those seven banks, we picked the top two that our committee selected to come in for further interviews. Uh, out of those top two, uh, we decided that Arvest Bank gave us the best services that are in line with what the city needs at this time. Uh, and I have Andrea Sines here from Arvest Bank to say a couple of words.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening, Andrea. How are you?
I'm wonderful, mayor and council. Thank you so much. Um, for one, just trusting Arvest with the next wave of your growth. Um, to give you just a quick snapshot on why this is so important to me, and then Arvest as a whole. Uh, Arvest recruited me from Christian County, as I served as the economic developer for the last six years for Christian County. And understanding that, I also, seventh generation to grow up on my farm, um, so I can speak both languages, and I understand the waves that you all are headed through, um, as we have done the same thing, and want to just really partner with you to do whatever it takes to enable that growth and to help you in this next process. Specifically, our market president, Jason England, and Shane Cowgar, our loan manager, are very grateful for this as they have worked with your institutions, um, or worked with, um, Mr. Cameron in Northwest Arkansas. So they're excited to continue that relationship, uh, here in Missouri, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Mainly, I just wanted to say thank you.
Any questions? Thank you so much for being here tonight.
It's my pleasure.
As with that, uh, that the city staff recommends Arvest Bank, um, for the city's banking services.
Kyle, you broke down like three months of really hard work into thirty seconds.
It was tough.
That was, look, you made it look easy, but I know how hard everybody's been working on this, so thank you for putting this together and appreciate it. Do we have any questions from council to any of the city staff regarding this decision?
I'm one.
Yes, please.
Sorry, I'm new, so, uh, does, the fact that they don't have, do they have a stand-up building in Republic?
Um, at this time, they do not have a stand-up building in Republic. Currently, uh, with our current bank, we use courier services to service, uh, any of our deposits.
I was just curious, how much, how much of the, the thought process that, like finding a place that has a location in Republic, does that factor in at all?
We, yeah, it, it did factor in. Um, that, that was a big part of it. Um, but the other part of it was the, uh, due to the city's growth, uh, as well, uh, there was other services, uh, as far as handling, uh, bond proceeds, other development processes, uh, technological improvements for our, uh, for our accounts payable, uh, process, and also purchase card, fuel card, other services they provide. So we did weigh that consideration, um, but it was the ultimate unanimous decision of the committee that Arvest, um, given everything else, provided the best services at this time for the City of Republic.
Can you repeat that, Alton?
Yes, please.
I was going to if you didn't.
Yeah.
Just to put pressure.
Uh, so we are in current site selection, uh, on where we're going to land in Republic, and that was my recommendation to actually move forward with a Republic location over Christian County, as we are also looking at Ozark. Just to kind of expand the complexities of that. So with federal compliance, we are required to have, uh, equal locations in low-to-moder income areas as we are in high, high-income areas. And so with the growth of the entire region right now, if you will, we're kind of waiting for a slot to open, but we have been working with a broker and looking at development land, and so as soon as possible, we will have a location here.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
You and everybody else.
Any further questions?
Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote, which is what I'd like to do. Uh, all those in favor of resolution number twenty-two dash R dash thirty-four, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Staying.
Resolution carries seven, zero to one. Moving on to item number fifteen on our agenda. This is twenty-two dash R dash thirty-five. A resolution of the city council approving a preliminary plat for Tiger Creek, a residential subdivision consisting of approximately forty acres located at three, four, four, five, East Heinz Street. Uh, I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-two dash R dash thirty-five, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Good evening again.
Good evening. Uh, Essex Tiger Creek LLC has requested, um, review and approval of a preliminary plat. This is on forty acres consisting of one hundred and twenty single-family residential lots, streets, and infrastructure. Uh, the preliminary plat requires location of the existing Liberty Place Lift Station. This is in the subdivision directly to the west to facilitate, uh, gravity flow throughout the development. Uh, the e-flow from this, um, particular location will travel to the Schuler Creek Lift Station and then pumped to the wastewater treatment facility. Uh, the development plan, um, does also require and is provided with a looped water system connecting to existing water mains in Liberty Place and also along East Heinz Street. The plat contains two new, two new local street connections to East Heinz. It also has a connection to East Colonial Street, which is the, um, street running through Liberty Place One directly to the west. Um, it also has several new, uh, just local streets to serve individual lots within the subdivision. The property does not contain any identified sinkholes. It does contain a small area floodplain at the very northeast corner of the property, and also a blue line stream, uh, which requires additional compliance with, um, City of Republic regulations, Corps of Engineers, uh, state, and FEMA. Uh, the planning and zoning commission heard this, um, at the last meeting in July. They did recommend, uh, unanimous approval. Um, staff is also recommending approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I, I know it's not the developer's, uh, responsibility, but there's been some discussion about, uh, intersection of Heinz and ZZ with the traffic.
Yes, um, that.
We're, sorry, yes. I, you know, since I-
We need to get blinds up there.
Since he's coming back next week, I gotta get in everything I can, right? Uh, we're working with MoDOT on that. Um, in OTO, we've identified it as a cost share project. The assist fund allows for, I believe, Jared, correct me if I'm wrong, two million dollars, uh, through twenty-twenty-seven for Heinz Street improvements. Uh, one of those locations we're already working on, that's Lynn and Heinz. Uh, this would be the second. So we would take the second part of those funds, apply for the cost share, and address, uh, Heinz and ZZ. That's our intent. I would expect to, um, add to Garrett's workload probably late this year, early next year, um, in getting that application process.
Are we thinking roundabout, or were you talking to actual stuff like?
Fundamentally, MoDOT will tell you roundabout every time. So that, I would say roundabout. That's their preference is to adding signalized intersections to their system is to add roundabouts.
Other questions for Andrew or Karen? All right, seeing none. I understand that we have Mr. Whitlock here.
I'm telling you, it's horrible. Uh, yes. Good evening, mayor and council. My name's Greg Whitlock. Uh, address is twenty-one thirty-one West Republic Road, uh, number five-ten Springfield. Um, I'm representing the developer. As Karen mentioned, I, uh, she did a good job again covering, um, everything. She did mention the blue line, um, with, the blue line stream which runs from, uh, Heinz Street up to, uh, the north side of the property where we show the detention basin. We are in the process of, of permitting that through the Corps of Engineers. We just, um, received our clearance for endangered species yesterday, so, uh, we have also gone through a, uh, jurisdictional determination, um, with another consultant and submitted that back to, um, the Corps of Engineers. So that process is moving along, so I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Uh, Mr. Sutton?
This has no bearing, but I'm looking at these street names, and I'm wondering, you know, I'm trying to picture what the houses would look like, and I'm thinking, uh, you know, with Wilson's Creek right there down the street, um, is it by chance going to be kind of like a colonial-style house, or not? Again, no bearing on, uh, anything, but I just, I'm looking at those street names.
I know that, actually, those, those street names were kind of carried over from Liberty Place Phase one and two. As far as the type of homes, I know the developer, they have pretty strict covenants and restrictions on what types of homes. So he may be able to answer that better than I can.
Gotcha.
He said endangered species. What do you mean by?
Well, as, as part of the federal permitting process, the, the laws require that, that we go through an endangered species clearance to make sure that there's, there are no species on the property that we would potentially disturb.
In Missouri, that's generally blind, k- fish and bats.
And we're safe.
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes. They, they do give guidelines as far as taking down trees at certain times of years and things like that. I believe there was also a, a lichen that is an endangered species. It's like a moss.
You like moss?
Yeah.
Moss can be an endangered species?
Yeah, Wilson's Creek's got a section.
Really?
All right, we're done talking about this.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, non-moss related? All right. Seeing none? Thank you very much, sir. As this is a resolution, we can move immediately to a vote, which is what I will do on resolution twenty-two dash R dash thirty-five. All those in favor vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution passes eight to zero. Moving on to item number sixteen on our agenda. This is twenty-two dash R dash thirty-six. A resolution of the city council approving the demolition of the current Public Works Building located at two-two-one North Main. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-two dash R dash thirty-six, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this resolution would authorize us to, at the time it's appropriate, which will be probably next year. We're looking at March.
Thirty years ago.
Yeah, or thirty years ago. Demo the current Public Works Building at two-twenty-one. If council will recall, we did an engineering study back in, I think it was early eighteen with Miller Engineering. That, that building had some structural issues that were leading to mold issues and we ended up sealing off a portion of the building. But long story short, just to get it updated to functional was about seven hundred thousand dollars. That space, we haven't been able to identify it as usable for anything as far as city operations go. So the, the purpose of bringing it early is so that the city can start planning then what to do with that space. And, you know, there's tons of, of discussion. We, we need some additional parking just for city hall in general. Additional storage space, additional green space downtown. I think there's a lot of options there, but this would allow us at least to have that, you know, confirmation that we can, we can do with, away with the existing building.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Franklin.
Mr. Mayor. Did the city ever look at selling this property as an alternative to knocking the building down?
We did. And just, I think that that's always an option. Our, my professional opinion is there's a lot of liability in selling that building. Just structurally, the mold issue, the age, I think it's tough. I think it's a tough sell.
One more question, sorry. Do we have an estimated cost on the demolition of this building? I'm, I'm assuming we're gonna take care of a lot of it in-house.
Yeah, the, the, there's a long list of people that would like to line up and knock that down. So the biggest expense for us would be disposal of the, the building itself. So we're probably looking at some cost to haul to the landfill. I will say, you know, there are a few items in the building that could be considered maybe historic. So we'll work with city council and, and city staff to identify some of that stuff and then dispose of that in a way that's fitting for that. I think there's some, particularly there's some old jail cell doors and potentially some stone and things like that. We'll, we'll, we'll work to identify that on real bricks.
Yeah.
Good point.
Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none? And as this is a resolution, I will call it immediately for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Go have fun knocking that building down. All right. Item number seventeen on our agenda. This is twenty-two dash R dash thirty-seven. A resolution of the city council authorizing the city administrator to enter into a contract with Reddick LLC for professional advisory services. I need a motion and a second to take up twenty-two dash R dash thirty-seven, please.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is really a renewal or an extension with Reddick. They were our advisor through the process of, of working with the legislative group to get ARPA dollars for the wastewater. And I, I mentioned that in, in an email to the council, but when the governor signed House Bill thirty-twenty, that secured our, our first allocation and request of twenty-five million dollars for the City of Republic for wastewater. So that's, that's a good day for the City of Republic. It's a piece of the pie that is, is wastewater improvements in the City of Republic. So good news. We had really good luck, I believe, with the result with Reddick. And I, I think that it's prudent that we take that into the next session as well to work on, on further, bless you, further dollars.
Questions from council on this issue? Seeing none? And as this is a resolution, we'll call it immediately for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. That finishes the agenda up to the point of reports from staff.
Thank you. I, I really just want to take some time just to say thank you to a few groups of people over the last, oh, three weeks since our last council meeting. We've had a lot of, of work come in. So particularly to the staff, this is a heavy agenda, so it took a lot of work for our staff to get prepared for this agenda. The other, the other group I want to say thank you to, to the Dorsey family, to that group that was heavily involved in the Prairie Ridge PDD. Refreshing meetings. Everybody handled it well. The questions were wonderful. If you can't tell, I like to talk about infrastructure. So it, it was good. I, I appreciate the discussion. And then lastly, to the city council interviewees that we had, we had a lot of great applicants. It's refreshing to see people wanting to get involved. We're gonna definitely task some of those with other boards and commissions. So looking forward to that. And then Jared, I wanted to give him an opportunity to talk about Have a Blast. It was...
I was gonna do that.
Oh, do you wanna give it to Jared?
No, it's fine. Go ahead. No, that's good. I'm sorry. It's all right.
Thank you. So Friday, July first was a special night for the City of Republic. I don't know how many of you were in attendance, but I knew we were like on the edge of something pretty cool when they closed Heinz Street at seven-thirty. I was like, okay, we've never closed Heinz Street at seven-thirty. So we estimate somewhere between fifteen to seventeen thousand people were there. And you don't pull off an event like that without a lot, a lot of help and a lot of cool community support. So thank you so much to our sponsors. I don't wanna list them all because the list is pretty long, but we have a lot of sponsors for that event. Monetary sponsors, work sponsors, in, in any way people can contribute to pull that off, they pull it off. So volunteers, we have about a hundred and twenty volunteers out there. We take good care of our volunteers, but it's still a long, hot night for those volunteers and we thank them so much for coming out. City workers, every year we grow, every year bring more people and more people bring a few more things we gotta deal with. So police and fire were amazing that night. They handled every single thing that came up flawlessly. It was awesome. We had a few injuries, none, nothing serious. Had a few matters that required police attention. Again, nothing serious. But just to have them there and not to worry about that component is incredible. So it was good stuff. And finally, I want to thank our community for the support of their event. I mean, to see this thing grow each and every year is something special. It's, it is beyond a city event. It's a regional event. We know people set their entire calendar years by Have a Blast. You can see it by the block parties. Not only are they obviously at Jerrymart Park, which is cool to be there, and I would encourage everyone to be there because it's the best seat in the house, but they're on Sixty Highway, they're on all the adjoining properties. So it's just a special night for Republic, but that's it. I just want to thank everyone for, A, helping with the event and B, for supporting it, so.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
That's it?
That's it.
All right. This is, David's back?
I know.
And so, all right. Fair enough. Reports from council? Mr. Franklin.
Actually, I have a question. I was wondering about our upcoming road construction projects that we've just passed. Could we get an update on that?
Sure.
Great question.
Yeah, it is a great question. I should have updated you on that. The, the contractor we hired, Blevins Asphalt, currently paving in Springfield. The wetter-than-average spring set them behind in Springfield and they're tied to some pretty heavy liquidated damages with that contract. So they have until Garrett, August, August twelfth, which is just before school. And to our knowledge, they're gonna fulfill that. In the event that they camp or something happens, I'll probably look to have them do that work at night just to avoid the, the early school traffic. Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. And, please, I'll continue. Congratulations, Mr. Self. Congratulations, Mr. Gurlik. Look forward to working with both of you and appreciate having you up here. Thank you for volunteering. I'd like to reiterate what Jared said. It's hard to have a conversation out there. When I got home, it was just so loud because it was talking so loud, so many people, everyone's having a great time. So I got to see more, having a good time than hearing it just because it was so loud. So thank you to all the volunteers and all the, the hard work that staff put into that. And I'd also like to thank all of the applications that did put in to the council member positions. That was a lot of quality applicants. The only other thing I have to say is don't forget to vote on August second. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish, Mr. Updike?
I'd say Jared, when I left Have a Blast, there were people parked from Oerschland's Walmart and all the way down in parking lots were packed, all the way down to Easen, where people were watching the show and everything like that. So I gotta give you props on that. I think this, well, you said seventeen to ninety thousand? May have been at the park, but I think overall it's probably a lot higher than that. And also to the people of Republic, Brett Mo Radio just released the podcast with Jared and Melissa about the parks tax. Jennifer, sorry. My apologies. If anybody's, that, they had, it was a great podcast. They explained a lot and answered a lot of questions. So if anybody's out there, the Brett Mo Radio would be a great one. That Jake Wilburn per town.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Moving this side. Any statements from council? Well, as mayor, I get to finish this thing up. Jared, look, honestly, outstanding work. I say that every year and I mean it more every year and I don't know how that's possible. And I know that you get the entire team working to, so thank you. To Andrew, who has stepped in while David's been gone on freedom leave, I, I'm happy to report I have not contacted him once, no matter how bad I've wanted to, about like just, hey, I've got a question. But Andrew and I have talked a lot during his absence, so we, we have opened lines of communication. And I have to say, you have stepped into this role really well. Not that I'm surprised in the least, but I am very, very pleased we were in good hands while David's been gone. So thank you for stepping up and doing that.
Thank you.
To our two new council members, newish, I mean, welcome back. Brandon, I'm looking forward to working with you again. It's always been a pleasure and I anticipate it to be the same in the future. And Clint, man, I'm just excited to have you here. So, I'm glad your kids got to see it, so.
Well, those weren't my kids.
Oh, fine. Whatever. Perfect. That's, makes it even better. Those kids. With that, I think that's everything I've got this evening. So please travel safe home and meet...